Wednesday, October 26th, I will probably order the meeting of the village board. If you'll please rise for the public to read.
What conditions do you defy of the United States of America? And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Roll call, please. Trustee Racick.
Colonel.
Trustee Gonzalez. I don't see. Trustee Gray.
Eric.
I told trustee Horn will that be here?
Horn, I'm here.
I'm sorry. I got Holston, I said Horn. Correction, trustee Holston. And trustee Horn.
I'm here.
And trustee Pop.
I'm here.
At this point in the agenda, we will go to open to the public, agenda items only. Please come to the podium and leave your comments in three minutes regarding the agenda items. With nothing further on there, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. That's correct, there are no consent agenda.
It's just the bills and the ordinance.
Yep. That was just an assignment for the ladies, but that's not.
The only answer is yes.
That's correct, but they're not included in this.
Where are they?
Trustee Bob, they'll be at the next meeting. I am looking at this point to accept the agenda as posted. It wasn't on the agenda, so therefore we can't vote on it. So, the consent agenda includes the bills and assigning ordinance number 1767 to develop agreement from the 9/28/16 board meeting.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Horn and Racick.
Roll call, please. Trustee Gray.
No.
Trustee Horn.
Yes.
Trustee Pop.
No.
Trustee Racick.
Yes.
Now, what goes?
I'll put a border, so does that mean they're approved, or how does that work?
That's approved.
They are approved, okay, so we can pay our bills.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, do you have anything to report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor's report, I have a few items of discussion, believe, or even we were talking about going to executive session before we address the municipal office, is this correct? At this time, I would like to jump ahead to the executive session. Matters of personnel. Personnel appointment removal, whatever of officers, section 2C3, section 2C1. Anything else in there, Larry?
No, sir.
Okay. Somebody want to?
I'll make that motion, I'll second it.
Gray and Racick, roll call, please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Yes.
Racick.
Yes.
We shall return from. Time is now 7:09. Returning from executive session. Mr. Clerk, why don't you ready for roll call, please?
Trustee Pop.
Yes.
Racick.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
And Horn.
Yes.
Okay. Couple of items that were not on the agenda, then when we get onto the agenda items here as well. Just to reword in on the situation here, we have, maybe you're aware of the fact that we have the, now the public information, Amazon is moving along with their development over there, they've got walls that are interacting, things of that sort. We've been in conversation with the fire department for quite some time pertaining to their ability to service such a behemoth of a building when it comes to the height and everything else, I believe in some spots it's 50 feet tall or something thereabouts. They are currently not able to service that with their equipment and their resources. They are a, obviously whenever there's a response needed for certain things, they do hope that other agencies will respond and we have assistance to them, but this is truly a matter of life safety. As you may know, the fire department is actually a separate district, it's not part of the village, but we rely heavily upon their intergovernmental relationship that they have with us, and the fire chief himself has been an absolute pleasure to work with in regards to helping us with our economic development partnerships and growth of the village and things like that. He's been a huge champion on behalf of our village. I can't think of enough of that. That's just on a personal side, if you will. What they are looking for is some assistance with this, and I tend to agree because it's truly a matter of life safety, and it would be a service to our entire industrial park. We've had limitations in the past because, for instance, like with a hotel, you could only have a three-story hotel because of the ability to service and access. If we were, if we are to consider our growth needs and everything else, there's relevance in looking into partnering with the fire district and helping them in their acquisition of a ladder truck. The ladder truck that the chief has been looking at, what I believe was it, Kevin, you were there, a 75-foot ladder, is that correct?
Ladder.
100-foot ladder, but at a proper angle, it could go 75 horizontal feet, or vertical feet, I guess, if you'll at the angle. There would be some benefit areas as well, because it has a 15-degree drop, so in some cases it could be used for rescue operations and things of that sort. Bottom line is, it would improve the ISO rating, especially in the commercial districts, which would lower from four to three, resulting in lower property and casualty insurance rates for our businesses especially. It would increase their, fire district's versatility in serving our residential properties as well. It would actually be an economic tool because of its ability to help us recruit and allow for taller buildings, you know, as indicated, a hotel might have six floors instead of three, or something of that sort. And any other development in the village should be interested in participating with. The chief has done his homework. The cost that he has, I believe, is $1.2 million. We've conferred with council and our finance director regarding the issues on this, and he is seeking a commitment from the village to the turn of 50% of the cost of the ladder truck, and so that would be roughly $600,000. And I'm talking to the finance director, we do have some of those funds available, but not necessarily all of them available for a one-time situation like that. And it is, Larry, eligible?
I'm gonna look into it, Mayor, and then do a structure in such a way, like an IGA, acknowledging the need for it, and we'll see, you know, what we can determine to be eligible under the TFA.
So, we're not actually looking to vote on it tonight, I just want to make sure everybody's ready on it, so that we're aware of it, so that we can address it going forward. But we are looking at avenues of how we can partner with them. When we place a burden on them, and in relation to the matter of life safety, I think we have an obligation to partner with them in that regard. So, based on that information, I just want to reword in on it, make sure you're all aware of it. The finance director and the attorney will both review our standings on those issues, and hopefully at an upcoming meeting, perhaps at the next one, we can have some determination on that. The next item we have is, we had an unfortunate situation occur regarding one of our, one of our pieces of equipment in the public works department that we use in the water department, and it has left us in a very untimely situation because we don't have the ability, it's not still on today or tomorrow, but if we had a situation arise even in the water department, we would not be able to service it currently because we no longer have a backhoe, because of the damage that occurred to one. Superintendent Cruzel has diligently sought out numerous options, and determined the bid pricing has already been identified, based on regional networks that we're participating with. The replacement cost would be 92, almost $93,000, and that would be coming out of the water fund. I believe, Larry, I'm correct in saying that in a situation where it's a tiny sensitive issue that we can, as a board, make a determination on that without actually being in the agenda?
Yes, sir. What I would recommend, if the board wants to pursue it tonight, that's fine, and then reaffirm it to next village board, so.
So, at this particular juncture, I'm looking for further support for the superintendent to get the prevailing price that's available for government entities as ourselves, or whatever better he can do, of course, not to exceed $93,000 for a replacement of the backhoe. Let somebody make that motion through. I'll make that motion. Racick.
I'll second that.
Horn. Discussion?
Yes, sir.
How long does it take to get, take delivery on something like this?
Mr. Cruzel.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Depending on the vendor, this was the vendor that came to the chief of some bid through the National Joint Federal Alliance, and the mayor had stayed here, which we've utilized for purchasing multiple large pieces of equipment. NJPA is going to be saving us $46,000 off of this price of this particular unit for that. We can take immediate delivery on this, they had one that we wanted to look at. All the other vendors that I looked in for joint comparable pricing, Caterpillar and John Deere, it's gonna take several weeks to possibly a month to get their unit to sell to NJPA for this Indiana deal that we won out, can take immediate delivery, and also take in our old poor trade end is why we had it for the under 93, 92.
So, tell me, you use this in, of course, during the whole year?
Correct.
For excavation and so forth, but you also use it for snow removal, is that?
We do, yes. We use it for every operation that we have currently within the village, from water main breaks, to snow pile removal, to salt loading inside of vehicles, it's a multi-purpose unit. If we were to have the unpermitted MB this evening, I would not be able to service it. I would have to call in a contractor right now because I have nothing to dig. So, this is a dual-purpose unit, I'm sure everybody's seen it, but if you'd like to see pictures, it's similar to this right here, and it's used in various applications. This particular one, comparable to the unit that we have right now, will actually be able to pick a lot more. It's a better unit all around in doing that whole work.
But I just wanted to clarify for myself and for everyone listening, so when the snow flies, when we have, well, when do you start putting salt down? Is it two, is it one inch, two inch?
Well, as any responsible person at position would probably do, once we got our state bid pricing back on salt, where we got it, those loads could be shown up any day to be ready to grant a strike. Fortunately for me, you know, we were loaded up just in case there was some kind of shortage or something, so I don't eat it in an emergency rate a second as far as the salt, but yes, sir.
But to load it into the?
Snow flew tonight, I have no way to load it.
So, okay, that's a good question.
Just to clarify, regarding superintendent, so, it's not just a matter of snow accumulation on the roads that warrants the salt, it's also when there's freezing moisture of any sort.
It's the stone, it's the patch, it's anything that is used, we're doing road patching right now preemptively for the weather changes, and I can't, you know, we have a Ford tractor, it's very old, but it's not a backhoe, and it's not made as our grader. So, anything that goes in the bucket, it can, it lifts the back tires up, we have to put a ton weight on it. So, it's really not made for this kind of stuff, it's a very old machine, it's a very small machine, and anybody who has seen Bob tour around it in the past knows what I'm talking about with this unit, it's just a very old machine. This machine, backhoe machine, services the main braces, and services everything else, the snow pile points, the loading of the trucks, the air.
And what account does this come out of?
The 08 account, but it would be on a water account, 34% of my fiscal budget as of this point, as the total appropriation is right now. And finally, the finance director, we are well ahead of where we're at in our load and our gear, and that it could be appropriated without, you know, the depreciation on the other machine has been long since launched, it would be in '97, not that it was a planned purchase, I hate to have this happen, but at least now we can start taking those depreciations and go through here. But the finance director felt that it would just be better to pay it instead of trying to spread out the responsibility of doing a payment like we've done for the jet in the past, or the street sweeper in the past, where we financed it through the quit to finance and pay a little bit more in charge, and that he felt that given the water fund account itself, it could take this absorption without taking it then.
Thank you.
Any other questions, you can ask? We have a motion and a second, I believe, as a Racick, and Racick move towards, roll call, please.
Trustee Racick?
Yes.
Gray?
No.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have discussion approval of new hire in the department of Public Works as a water operator, on the recommendation of the superintendent of Public Works and the village administrator. I'd like to recommend the approval of hiring a Gene Pinky. And I entertain a motion to do such.
I make that motion?
I'll second.
Gray and Pop, roll call, please.
Discussion, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just so the public knows, this gentleman has, what, how many years' experience?
15 years.
15 years' experience in the field, we hired him before. End of discussion.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Racick?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have discussion and approval of an ordinance creating a new position, and that would be for a deputy superintendent of Public Works, just as a small aside, I don't think anybody in this town would challenge the work habits and the above and beyond participation of our superintendent, and as such, it is deemed relevant to recommend that he have a strong second in command as a part of the management team or the public works department. That being said, I would entertain a motion to approve the creation of this ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
And Pop for the second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Racick?
Yes.
In following with that, the recommendation?
Horn's number?
I'm sorry. Horn's number, sir?
1768.
What was that number I'm saying?
1768. In following to that creation of the position, the recommendation has come from the superintendent and also been interviewed and reviewed by the administrator, the recommendation would be for Ed Johnson, who also has several years of experience, quite familiar with our own operations here for obvious reasons, and I would make the request for the approval and, looking at the motion to approve Ed Johnson for the position of deputy superintendent of Public Works.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Racick and Pop, I have a Gray. Sorry. Twice the way it's been done.
Sorry.
Racick and Gray.
Thought I got ugly all of a sudden.
Hey, that's your friend. Roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Racick?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
1768?
Is that an ordinance number, Larry, or not? For actual appointment?
No, sir.
Next, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, just one item on my report, and it's in reference to Amazon, is, you know, it's underway. It'll require a signalization at Ridgeland in Monee, Manhattan, due to the volume of traffic, the expected volume of traffic for 2,500 employees, that the traffic signal there erected, and the developer is responsible for payment, for funding the signalization, and the village would be required to maintain the signals. But in order to do that on a county highway, we would have to enter an agreement with Low County Highway to have the authority to maintain the lights, so I would ask that the board would consider a motion to approve intergovernmental agreement with Low County for signalization at Ridgeland and Monee, Manhattan, and also at the, there's a second signal, and it would be the front entrance way. Off of Monee Manhattan Road. Correct. But just to reiterate, it would be funded by the developer and maintained by the village.
I'll make that motion?
I'll second it.
The session.
So, I assume we're talking signalization at Monee, Manhattan, and Ridgeland for one of them?
Correct.
And then?
1,000 feet west of there.
Then there's all four going in, dedicated for their parking.
Correct.
So, are they also responsible for widening the road there? It need be, I would simply think.
That is correct, and they're also responsible to purchase right of way to widen the road. So, that's, that's happening now as we speak.
Thank you.
I didn't catch the motion, I thought, Billy, you did move that?
Yeah, I was, Anthony, you're not first, but between the two.
Bill did the first, and then Racick did the second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Uh, yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Racick?
Yes.
And Gray?
Yes.
So, an energy government, typically, it probably should be assigned an ordinance, although this is a precaution.
Yes, sir, because the ordinance usually gives the authority to execute the IGA.
That being the case, if there's not actually, so, what we're doing here is we're approving the authorization to enact, then ordinance and/or authorization to sign.
The ordinance should be indicating for you to sign, so I can dispresent it.
Fine. Is that okay with everybody as presented there?
Uh huh.
Ordinance number, that's right.
1768.
Thank you.
Just one more item, it's actually for Parks and Rec. Trustee Gonzalez is gonna have beer tonight, but this is just to make the public aware of, this weekend we have Halloween happenings, it's from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at Fireman's Park, and just wanted to make sure that everybody dresses warm, and I think at the, or trustee Racick, if you, if you want to fill in some of the details. Put it in a spot.
They don't need it, it's bonfire.
Trucker tree.
Trucker tree, yeah, same thing we've been doing past few years.
Coat or a piece of clothing for a bucket?
Trustee Gray is gonna go as trustee Pop, just to confuse.
Like a ton or a piece of clothing and a coat, you know, bump him.
That's right, what'd you call me?
And this, also to let the public be aware that on Monday, October 31st, trick or treat is from the hours of 3:00 to 7:00 PM. 3:00 to 7:00 PM.
And report? Report.
Public Works, trustee Gray.
The one thing this evening, in the Highlands with the road projects, they have started laying the sidewalks down on Roosevelt Street. As of today, they're switching the detours, instead of Court Street, they've actually moved it down to Roosevelt because they will be working on Court Street, with starting to tear up the sides for the sewers, and as everybody knows on a Gibson Trail, that is all coinciding with the sewer systems. There are some pretty big holes out there by, especially the streetlights, just be cautious, be patient, again, with the weather, hopefully it moves along, but we are switching from Court Street to Roosevelt as far as the detour, again, depending on the weather today, tomorrow, you will see Wilson Street being dropped on sidewalks, and the opening is still there on the west side of the Highlands to get out by the truck wash and dump the yards to alleviate some of the traffic. End of report.
Thank you for your time. Just as a follow-up on that, effectively, superintendent Cruzel, do we have a timeline estimate for when they're gonna redo any of these curves on those streets that were? Next on the agenda, Parks and Rec, Mr. Cruzel, he's handled the finance, trustee Horn?
I'll report tonight.
Business development, I know trustee Holston is out, but on a, two items, I believe, Kevin, I know one of them is the, Southland ADC is doing a presentation at Bolt Field this week, Friday at 8, is it 8 or 95?
9:00.
And then you had something about one of our new businesses is having an opening?
Yeah. Very briefly, Lacy's Place, it's been open for a number of months, but they are wanting to do the grand opening and ribbon cutting ceremony on Friday, November 4th, ceremony at 1:00 PM. They'll have four hours of DJ music, platters of sandwiches, fruits and veggies, and they also have special on beverages there. Just as a reminder, you guys who are on the village board have, are aware, but video gaming revenues are dedicated to Parks and Rec, so we use that as a way to celebrate something that's not universally celebrated, but it benefits the kids. So, hope you can all come out and join us at Lacy's on Friday at 1:00 Monday to the community.
I would like to address as well, because I know there was one, a few counts that have been made pertaining to what people are claiming to be a gaming frenzy in our community, or reminding the board and the public that the village, I believe it was two years ago, just over two years ago?
Two years.
Changed our liquor license classifications, and in a sense, we protected the classifications pertaining to bars, so we have four bars and more. We have restaurants that are able to serve alcohol, and we have businesses such as gas stations or liquor stores that are able to sell retail, but we did specifically create a classification for gaming parlors, and we did restrict that to only two. So, if anybody's confused about that matter, we only have two actual gaming parlors.
He uses the universe apart.
Correct.
People think that's in my name.
Correct, and that's a common misunderstanding, so, well, Rose Cagering and all that is in the northeast corner of Monee, Manhattan, and Hamilton, Cleveland, is. and Hamilton, Cleveland, is technically University Park in that one corner. So while people presume that to be Mooney, it's not. But Mooney itself only has licensing allowed for two, and both of those have been filled. Anything beyond that would require board action to authorize. So just as a coverage, you know, reminding everyone that. Building Services, Trustee Pop?
Yeah, Julie's Cafe received occupancy on 10/17. As far as Amazon, if you happen to be driving by, you'll see that the east wall panels have been erected. It's a pre-stressed concrete, pre-cast. So the east wall was completed, and they're working on the south wall now. So it's, the underground sanitary pipes are completed. Excavation on the spread pleases continuing. They're moving right along, they're on schedule. Next week, they're saying that as far as the schedule's concerned, they'll complete the installation of the storm sewers at the south building entrance. They'll start curving at east and south parking lot. They're going to start structural steel erection, continue stone-based installation at the north parking lot, continue life stabilization for crane roads at the west and south of the building, and continue erecting pre-cast concrete panels at the north of the building. So they're moving right along. And I might say it's been delayed and delayed, but Eagle Fair, it appears safe to say that within two weeks, they'll be breaking ground for a couple of homes in Eagle Fair. End of report.
Thank you. Public Safety, Trustee Raisik?
He'll report on that.
Larry, by the way, I think that just as a matter of awareness, some of you have asked questions pertaining to a business that had been shut down briefly in town. Just so that you're aware of the situation, there was a public hearing pertaining to that situation. It is not something this administration takes light with. There were violations that were found, and they were not minor. And it was deemed appropriate to suspend our operations until those issues had been resolved. And once those items had been resolved sufficiently, they were allowed to reopen. If there's issues of life safety, or if there's issues of exposure to risk or liability, the village cannot take those issues lightly. As such, aside from any rumors or whatever else people may hear, or want to conjecture, the reality is, is we take seriously the relevance of the impact on somebody's business and their service to the community. And we do not intervene unless it is a matter of, typically a matter of life safety or risk or liability exposure. Is that correct, Larry?
Yes, sir.
Larry, what do you have on the agenda for yourself tonight?
The only item I have, Your Honor, is the ordinance establishing a public hearing. This is in response, so we propose TIF number five. The board hired Tuscan Associates to help us with this new TIF. Under the state statute, a public hearing has to be held to review the proposed redevelopment plan in the project area. All this ordinance is doing, Your Honor, is setting up that public hearing, and which I believe we have for December 14th at 6:00.
Yes, sir.
And the taxing districts will be made aware of that date, and it'll also be published in the newspaper.
Thank you, sir. We're also endeavoring, in light of that, Larry, we're also endeavoring, finance director and myself especially have been trying to get supportive documentation and data, if you will, from the county, so that we can properly advise and inform the other taxing bodies to be in the benefit of resetting the base, if you will, on some of the TIF districts. And just so that you're all aware, that doesn't come easy. For some reason, the county is not interested in sharing the data, even though it's oftentimes public record. They're just not been very helpful in that area. So as soon as we can gather that data, as soon as we can actually make that information available and get the support, I'm sure, of the other jurisdictions that are involved in this decision. So with that being said, Larry, you're looking for approval for this ordinance establishing a hearing?
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll entertain that motion.
Raisik and Pop? Did I get that pop right?
You had the pop right.
Raisik and Pop, real call, please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Holston?
Horn?
Horn, yes. It's an H.
You got it? All right, ordinance number four. That's our ones, right? Do we have anything in our old business? Anything in our new business?
Say that. We all need that problem.
Open to the public, non agenda items. Anybody in the public want to come and tell us? Okay. Nothing further, we've already gone through executive session, and the time is now, 7:42. Last notice I had here, the governor up 2-0.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Gray or Raisik?
Does the motion enter on the top of the board?
Yeah, what?
Or is it the?
Real call, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes?